Planning Board Meeting of February 15 is come to order at 7:04.
Oh yeah, adequate notice that the meeting has been provided.
Just call the roll.
Mr. Patel. Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Shucktow.
Here.
Mr. Panko.
Yeah.
Mr. Beg.
Yes.
Ms. Bari. Ms. Applegate. Councilwoman Jivers.
Yeah.
Mayor Morata.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman.
Yes.
Chairman Carr.
Here. This advised notice time, date, location, extent known, agenda, subject matter was promptly posted in public place reserved as such with similar announcements on February 8, 2023 and transmitted to the Times Princeton Pack and West Windsor Plains Row News on February 8, 2023 filed with Township Clerk on February 8, 2023. We've already called the roll. So first order of business is the minutes for January 11, 2023. Does anybody have any changes or amendments?
Yeah, I just have some typos. Under reorganization. My name there, I says Jivers with a period, so it just should be a comma. And the same thing at the very last line on that page, Jivers, there's a period, that should be a comma. And same, same thing. On the consent agenda, I wrote it, I and it's Jivers with a period should, you know, should be a comma, something, something in the computer program, I don't know. Yeah. And I guess on Stacy Fox's comments, you know, it says, she also said that the public would like to the townships, it's just take out that word too. So, so we should read, she also said that the public would like to. But she would like. She would like that township to reconsider. And on page three. Under Sylvia Askarelli's comments, second line, like Cranberry Road to Rabbit Hill, add the word road, Rabbit Hill Road. And that's it. Oh. Oh. Oh, you are, yeah, yeah, cranberries misspelled there, good catch.
Anybody else? Anybody? No, here none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes for January 11. As amended. Moved by Simon, second by Alan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are adopted. Thank you. Next up on agenda is resolution PB 16 dash oh one, Second Amendment, 19 Roselle Road LLC amended final site plan, block nine, lot 62, 19 Roselle Road. Jerry, please.
Yeah, this is, there had been a prior approval of a two building. Office Park on Roselle Road, the applicant came in recently to convert one of the buildings into a life sciences building. There were attendant. Changes to the site plan, they were not terribly significant. And the board approved the application, there were a number of waivers that were necessary, they are laid out in the, in the resolution. And I just wanted to point out two things in the resolution. Everybody, I take it, God, I guess from Sam. And modified page one, paragraph two, where we corrected. Something that we had the wrong date. But there are two other quick changes I just wanted to mention to you. Paragraph three, fourth line down. Building was never been constructed, it should have been, has never been constructed. And then also on page. In terms of the design waivers, it's been paragraph 23A. The fourth line, a new sentence starts, the floor print, it should be the footprint. And if I could elaborate more on the waivers, but they're, they're laid out and starting with paragraph 23.
That's fine. Anybody else have any amendments, changes, interpretation needed for the resolution? Nope.
No, but I just want to recuse myself from voting because I was not on the planning board last year.
Okay, so you wouldn't, okay, so. Right, you're not listed as a voting person in the back.
And I have to refuse myself as well.
Okay.
I was not here.
Absolutely, yep. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to. To accept the resolution. PB 16 dash oh one, Second Amendment, as amended by Jerry, they have a motion.
So moved.
Second by Annis, please call the roll for this.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Panko.
Yes.
Mr. Beg.
Yes.
Mayor Morata.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman.
Yes.
Chairman Carr.
Yes. Resolution adopted, thank you. Liaison reports, Environmental Commission, Annis, anything?
Yeah, I have a report, we have a meeting on February 9th, a week ago. With this discuss activities for the West Windsor environmental demonstration area at community parks. Including the planning of red cedar trees along the skate park fence. Additional white flowers for the pollinator, Indian gardens. A new gully scout project to add environmentally oriented little free, little free library in the, in the outdoor sitting area. With educational native pollinator plants. EC will take place at the, at the countywide green fest. Put on the Massa County Sustainability Coalition this year. By holding events. In Westminster's such as participating in the Arbor Day events in Roger. Are what, aboard them put on the, by the shade tree commission on April 29. EC also discussed solar lighting projects, including signs and larger lights for street and park areas. The EC reviewed the report prepared by me on the draft flood ordinance. This is required by the NJDP as part of an update for FEMA flood insurance requirements. DC voted to support the report and its endorsement of the draft ordinance proposed by the engineering pending approval by the NJDP. If approved by the NJDP, the rough, the draft ordinance will go to township council.
Okay.
That's it, any questions?
Thank you, any, any questions, Annis, or anything?
Want to be the affordable housing?
Yeah, sure, I didn't, it says joint.
Yeah, I'm on Affordable Housing Committee this year, so. I'll fill in. All right, there's no January meeting, so the Affordable Housing Committee did meet on February 2nd. Tom Calabria was elected chair and Gene Jacobson was elected vice chair. The committee voted to approve the new meeting time of 7:00 PM. The committee would like to have the mayor fill the vacancies on the committee as soon as possible. The committee will be working with Jerry Muller, the Affordable Housing Committee Attorney and Consultant Frank Piazza on a proposed ordinance. For recertification of very low income tenants who receive a $100 per month rent subsidy. It was agreed upon that the subsidy warrants certification.
Thank you. Any questions for Linda, Affordable Housing, and nothing, okay. Next up. Public comments, if anybody in the audience would like to step up to the microphone, state your name and address. And speak on non-agenda, non-pending items, please step up. Okay, I don't see anybody stepping up, so we'll move right along here. Next up on the agenda, application PB 22 dash oh six, trustees of Princeton University Campus Operations Building. Preliminary final major site plan, southeast corner of Lower Harrison Street and Nursery Road, block three, lot 1.012, property zoned. E District, M L U L 22223, I'm not going to read the whole description, it's right there, but Jerry.
Mr. Chair, the notice is proper, proof of publication service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay. Applicant is here and represented. Okay, please present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Christopher Degrizia from the law firm of Figury, Drinker, Biddle and Reath. Here on behalf of the applicant, trustees of Princeton University. As indicated, we're here for a preliminary and final site plan involving a campus operation building. You probably recall, we were here a few years back to talk about the planned and logical development of approximately 200 acres. In West Windsor for the Princeton University campus. We presented the general development plan and this board granted approval in January of 2020. And that's sort of the blueprint or the planning document that will govern years of development. After that, we presented a couple of site plan applications to this board. They involved, you probably remember graduate student housing, softball, tennis, parking, structure. Tiger building and other improvements. This is our third site plan application. Like the previous ones, it's consistent with the general development plan that was previously approved. It involves an operation that is actually there today, so when we focus in on this site. You'll see that the current operation is Princeton Nurseries, Princeton University Nurseries, which actually grows plants for the campus. So it grows plants and then plants them, and there's a component of campus operations there. The application is essentially consolidating some of the structures there, knocking down some of the old structures, removing some gravel and kind of streamlining. The process in the facility. So we're here today, we present, we put together a presentation, you have a hard copy. Before you, we also have a stack here, if anyone from the public would like to see, have a hard copy of our presentation. And we have a couple of witnesses that will help us go through the presentation. And unless, Mr. Chair, somebody has a question, I could. Bring up our witnesses and mark the exhibit into evidence.
How many witnesses will you be having?
We have a team of witnesses, but basically for the presentation, we have two, but we, we brought other consultants and specialists in case you have some. Specific questions, but overall, we have two witnesses to take us through the presentation.
Okay, we like to swear in the witnesses all at once to get out of the way, so if the two, at least the two can stand up, we can, Jerry can swear them in.
They're hiding in the back over there.
Okay. Well, you can't escape.
If you could, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth. So sworn or affirmed, if each of you can state your full name and spell your last name, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So let's, let's first mark our presentation. Into the record as exhibit A1. It is a PowerPoint, but like I said, we have hard copies and it is approximately, it is 14 pages long. So we'll mark that as A1 and we'll identify the pages as we go through the presentation. Our first witness is Mark Vicente, Mark. Oh. Oh. Our projector just went off.
Yeah, I think it just has to be turned on.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Do you need some more lights?
Okay, so as I said, we put on the projector exhibit A1, our first witness is Mark Vicente. Mark is the project manager for this particular project. He is also a New Jersey licensed architect who's currently licensed, is that correct, Mark?
That's correct.
And to the extent he provides any architectural. Testimony, we would like him recognized as a licensed New Jersey architect.
Okay. Any problems with witness, nope, okay, please proceed.
Thank you, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the campus operations project for Princeton University. Next slide, please. So our agenda for the presentation is start with the site context and operations of the project. We'll then go to site design and stormwater management. And we'll wrap up with building design. Next slide, yes? And the next one? So this slide.
And just mark for a second, for the record, we're on slide four.
Thank you. So slide four shows the general development plan for Princeton's Lake Campus. The site is bordered by the, consistent with the designation, which you can't see on the plan, of support, this building function and the area. The intent and function of the proposed and consolidation of the current uses. The building itself will be storage for maintenance of equipment. Storage of materials for maintaining the nursery and the university's grounds. The equipment includes items such as lawn and garden maintenance tools, lawn mowers, trim tools, and snowplows, etc. Buggies, Kubota, and pickup trucks. Materials include seasonal organic fertilizer and seed typically for immediate use. The nursery site itself. The current use and the planned use is for the growing of plants and trees. The plants that are grown at the nursery are replanted on the university grounds, plants include flowers, shrubs, and trees. The following activities do not and will not be on this site. There'll be no cleaning of vehicles on this site. There'll be no salt stored at this site, and there'll be no bulk storage located at this site. Typical hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, again, this is a daytime operation because they work with buildings and grounds. The only exception is emergency snow events, which case they would have to be there at night. Next slide.
You mentioned no cleaning of vehicles at this site. But obviously, the vehicles will, will need cleaning due to the nature of the work. Where in, at Princeton University does this happen?
I'm going to ask somebody in the audience that question, is that okay?
Yeah, you're, you're, go ahead, I just want to answer.
So wait, wait, before Devin speaks, we'll have to.
If you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth. So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
And Devin needs probably to come to the mic because we are recording everything, thank you.
And just for the record, Devin's title is Director Campus Grounds Facilities Operations. Do you need the question repeated, or did you?
No, that's fine, so we have a facility off of Faculty Road where we do some cleaning of vehicles there. And then if, if we have to, we would take them to a wash area offsite, so like a car wash type of facility.
And, and the, the Princeton location, I mean, I know you guys are doing a lot of development on the other side, like, is that going to remain in the same area?
That is correct. Yep.
I just have one question regarding the maintenance of the vehicles, I noticed that there's a lift that's being placed in the building, what are you going to be doing?
The repair of mowers and small, that might happen there as well.
And how are you?
Through the university disposal, probably every month, we do. The main garage.
You know, at night, I mean, during the day, there's daylight, and I was, a little bit of lighting and.
So that's not uncommon at our other facilities as well, as we have lights that we turn on in the building when we need it at night, but they're not lit if we're not there.
Inside, you're saying?
Outside as well.
Outside, yeah, the outside of the buildings, is it sensor lights, or is there anything?
I'll, I'm not sure how they are in this building, but I'll defer to Mark.
Yes, the, the lights that are going to be on the new building are motion sensor. We do not have any lights in the, in the new parking area. Couple of reasons, one, it's a continuation of what's there now, we don't have lights. And, you know, we, we're not interested in, in lighting up the whole area, it's a daytime operation, so the need for lights is, is minimal.
Right, except that you have snowplows there now. And that's, that's a 24/7 operation, I don't know, the snowplows could be called at six at night, or three in the morning, or, or whatever, and how many snowplows are there?
So there's probably about five or six plows that would go on certain trucks today. And that process has been going on there at that site probably since the 1970s, so it's not really concern of ours, we've been doing it since then. And the lighting has always been adequate, we've not had a problem.
Okay.
So the self-actuated lights will essentially serve the purpose.
That's correct, and then the vehicle lights also.
Right. You're not storing sand or salt or anything there for roads?
We are not, that'll be stored at a different facility.
So those snowplows will go pick that up someplace else.
That's correct.
So I'm going to reckon that you have two types of snowplows, one would be for the interior roads of Princeton University. And secondly, snowplows of a smaller nature to do all the pedestrian pathways. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any more questions on what we've covered so far? Okay, next slide. The campus operations building will have a footprint of 5,733 square feet. The building location accommodates the future master plan road, which is shown dashed on the plan. The building is sited approximately 269 feet away from Lower Harrison. A gravel drive surrounds the building. This is to accommodate fire truck access around the whole building, which is required by ordinance. The driveway consists of 12 feet of gravel with six feet of stabilized turf shoulders on each side. The parking ordinance does not include a use commensurate with the use of this building, so we have calculated the required parking based on the employees who'll be on the project. Our projection is that there will be 18 full-time staff at this site plus an additional eight summer staff. In addition to those staff members, there are 10 work vehicles that are parked on the site, 10 pickup trucks. The 36 required spaces are covered with the 35 parking spaces we show here, plus the credit for one make-ready electric vehicle space. There are nine spaces shown on the south side of the building directly in front of garage doors.
Why? Why, 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 if, if, if there's going to be a lot of in and out from the building, from the four entrances, or three or four entrances along that, that space, why is, are we having parking?
So they will only be parking there at the end of the day, so at the end of the day, we have work trucks that will park there in front of the barn. And then they'll stay there throughout the evening, and then during the day, they'll be, the employees will go into those work trucks and then leave the site. So that's why there's parking in front of the barn, we have that in our other locations as well.
You say in front of the barn, or, or, well, are you calling this the barn, the proposed building?
He, he's calling it a barn, but it's the proposed building.
Right, I, I mean, I personally don't like that idea of parking any trucks in front of it, if you need more parking, just ask for it, but I don't. Like from, I don't like that idea at all. You know, it's emergency services, emergencies in the middle of the night or something, or anytime during the day, you never, you never know. I, I don't see why we should have anything, any cars, trucks.
I, I also think that area does serve as a purpose for actual use, so they'll have like, you know, a snow, a snow machine there. Or they'll pull the car up and they'll load whatever they need to load, so it's, it's sort of a utility area. In terms of access for fire trucks or emergency vehicles, that's why we do have a road that presents access around the entire building. This is really a work area, it's convenient, it has all the, the doors that open, so there're going to be parking vehicles there, whether it's a striped parking space or not, because it just functions that way. And then when the people come in and park their car this more, in the morning, they could walk up to this space and take one of the trucks there. Do whatever they need to do from within the building and then head out to campus, so it's, it's part of their ongoing operation and design, it's sort of how it functions. In, in other facilities they have, and it's, it's an efficiency issue as well. It's not, it doesn't, this site, I'm sorry, I just want to say, this site doesn't function like a typical site, this is really a service area. There's no visitors, so parking is strictly limited to employees, the entire site is gated, so around the entire nurseries, you have a big fence. To keep out people as well as deer, and the only way in is through the gate where they come in in the morning, and that gets locked in at night, you know, at the end of the day around 3:30.
From my, from my perspective, at first I thought that was like a bad idea to have parking in front, but in reality, the way a building like that functions. You can park there, they have to just move it if they need to get into the garage, I mean, when we develop, I, I was. In charge of designing Veterans Park in Hamilton Township, and we have a maintenance building where we have garage, we have cars parking right up front. When they have to get into that garage, they just move it, it's, it works, I don't really see any difficulty with it.
If you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do. For the record, David Novak, N O V A K, with Birds Associates, the natural planning consultant. We haven't gotten to the architectural testimony yet, but the garage area isn't the only access in the building as well, you can see there's two other entrances with the driveway right next to it, so. Heaven forbid if there's an emergency where emergency vehicles need to get in, there are two other doors near that access aisle as well.
I mean, emergency vehicles are not going to go into the building.
No.
They'll still be able to access the garages, whether there's cars or trucks parked in front of them.
Yeah, they're, they're pedestrian doors, so I was referring more to emergency vehicles or paramedics. There's a garage door on the backside too. There is, but there's two other doors you can see with the triangle one.
Yep. I have one question, though, in terms of access to the site, you're still going to be using Nursery Lane?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so there's not going to be any change to that, but I did notice, is Nursery Lane currently paved at the, at the. At the intersection of Harrison?
No, it is not currently paved, it's gravel all the way to Lower Harrison.
From my perspective, it's important to pave an apron from Harrison going in at least 50 to 75 feet, so. Stone just doesn't kick out onto the roadway, causing any problems.
That, that does make sense, we'll, we'll have some testimony a little bit on that, but basically, that section is in the county jurisdiction, and we started to, and that's sort of what we're.
From my experience with the county, if you present that to the.
We've had discussions about that.
You mentioned the fence, and there'll be a lock, does emergency services have a, there's an emergency? There's an emergency like overnight or after hours?
Princeton's public safety has access to that, yes.
Oh, well, what about West Windsor? I mean, West Windsor reviewed the plan, so I would think it'd have a key too. That's on the building, but it should have.
The police department and public safety.
Right, but we're we're saying we, I wish that we also get that. I mean, it should be.
Then there should be one on the gate.
He might.
Testimony about to give.
Evening, everyone. Kristen Applegate, Assistant Vice President for Community and Regional Affairs. Um, thanks for uh being here. And Department of Public Safety. Um, I am in agreement that is between Princeton University, but there's a written agreement. First response to campus property. Those first responders often coordinates directly with West Windsor Police. Of the universities with the West Windsor Police. So as new facilities are part of the M O A and access is discussed. Because of the nature of it being due to public safety, they're not published because you don't wanna let the bad people know who's coming, right? So um it it's review, there's regular conversations. I won't say it's annually, but there's regular review between chief of police in West Windsor, the department and public. They go through all of those. Oftentimes, I know.
Does the applicant have any objections to us having the key to the fence?
I would just offer having a key might not appropriate response would be that the access to the site should be discussed between public safety and, because I don't know if keys exist. So just say give a key that might to um indicate how the access is given.
Condition that discussed.
Yes, that's certainly acceptable. We don't want to be appropriate to condition it on our discussion with.
Yeah, all right, make that a condition. Okay.
Just wanna clarify, I'm I'm on our, I'm a first responder in Princeton for many years. I've been worked um Princeton University, many ambulance calls. Yesterday, yesterday or the day before, um, they are are there. If we have a specific building, they will, they will lead us into the building, the elevator, if it's on a different. They not, and um they have a a public safety officer in the dorm room, for example, and this other guy is leading us to the, to that dorm room. So they have multiple people uh available if there's an emergency on campus. Um, and it's um of a a extremely tight relationship between the first aid squad, um, the fire department, the police department, and the uh public safety department.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question off the top of your head, anybody? Are there other buildings with fences around them currently that are locked somewhere on the Princeton campus world? There's gotta be another building with a fence around it, right?
Yeah, there's, there's other operation.
Now you had, yes.
Yes.
I'm sure that falls under the purview of the existing um cooperation agreement between West Windsor Police uh first responders and services. So the point I'm trying to make is that there's nothing special about this fence and this lock around this building. Because it's gonna be added to the inventory of all the other buildings. And the cooperation agreement is gonna go into effect, and if there's an emergency, they're gonna figure out how to open that fence up and there's a lock box, according to Chief Lynch, there'll be a lock box on the front of the building. So the point I'm trying to make, I guess, a long, long story here, is that I don't think we need a special condition for this building. Because it's gonna fall under the existing cooperation agreement.
I mean, if I recall correctly, the Tiger Cub building, which is the the service plant over by the the new parking garage on the Lake Campus, that's, I think, a fenced-in facility, am I right?
No, it's not.
It's not.
It's not. The the fenced-in facilities are the utility facilities. Generally, campus is pretty open. I mean, that door sort of locked to that building, the Tiger building, but you really have the service yards where you have the people.
And that one doesn't really have a service yard.
I don't believe that one's fenced in. I mean, somebody could correct me on that, but. It's under construction, so we'll find out soon.
Yeah, it is. It is not. Um, it is typically um maintenance areas that we're trying to keep public out. Everything else is pretty open.
Yeah. And and I'd also like to state that it it's an operation right now. It's fenced in and locked right now. So it's not, this isn't a new fence, it isn't a new gate, it isn't a new operation. It's just a a building inside, and you'll see the next slide when we get through. We're removing some of the facilities there, consolidating and putting one new building there. So it's 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 not like this is a new fence or a new gate. It's an existing.
There was a, is, is there was an issue tomorrow, Princeton Safety and Security would coordinate with West Windsor Police and figure out how to open that fence, whether it's a key, um, an online application or a bolt cutter.
And I'm sure they have a processor ready.
I don't know. When I grew up, the bolt cutter was very effective. So I I don't um, I don't know. I don't see it a problem.
Thank you. Mark, I think unless there's any other questions, we'll continue.
Yeah, we're still on the, on this slide. Uh, so I do want to.
As you go through, if you could identify the number of the slide.
Yes, this is slide number seven.
Thank you.
And a couple more uh notes about the parking. Uh, two ADA spaces are being provided. Uh, parking is being provided, vehicle make-ready parking spaces.
Mark, can you just briefly touch upon?
I'm gonna actually even to talk about that. I think he's got a better.
Uh, is really just trash that's generated. They'll remove that um just like they do today.
I noticed on the garages on that one, you have a garage door on the face or access to that out of there or not? At one.
Yeah, the intent is that is a drive-through.
It's a drive-through.
Right, it gives the ability to drive from from both sides.
So on your drawing there.
It shows a road.
Yeah, there's no opening, there's no paving.
Yeah, there, yeah, that's um, that's right on the drawing. There should be paving there. The paving accounted for in the, in all the calculations. It's uh, it's just something on the rendering.
So there will be a, there will be a driveway.
There'll be a short driveway that gets you to that stable. Access from both ways.
There, this is the pedestrian access and right, there is a drive, for whatever reason, it was not picked up in this graphic. So there is a section right.
A connection out.
A place where they would come out or in.
Okay, the next uh topic on this slide has to do with the uh the dark green areas, which uh are are showing our new lands. And the dark green areas are all new trees that we're planting. Uh, we're approximately ninety trees. The new trees will be strategically uh to best screen the building. Uh, in addition, shrubs will be planted around the building. Just as everywhere else will be uh shrub. Any questions on?
nearest neighbor um to you, to this.
Also top of my head, but are you talking uh for Lake?
Low on Lower Harrison. I'm just curious about landscaping to uh for that new building.
Understood. As you see, we're we're planting a new road building. Uh, there, in in addition, it's a little thin that side of the building as well. Uh, it's gonna be heavily heavily covered with trees, and even if you go a little bit more to the west, Christopher, there's there's some more trees.
Oh, west this way?
Up there, there that way. There's the ones that we are uh putting in. So to the east is the is the parking area, and we're screening the parking area with the trees all around that as well.
Where's the entrance? It said Lower Harrison Street. Where's the?
So at the top of the slide, you see where it says Nursery Road?
Comes in in this way?
So the connection between of Nursery Road, the page, it can be gated.
Site location is the distance between the road and the building, where you have a lot of mature trees that are remaining untouched. And then we cited areas, and that's where we located the tree. So you're looking at, you know, almost a a football field between the the road. It's close to, you know, three hundred, something like that. Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, so Andrew, you were already sworn in. Let's begin. Um, can you tell us a little bit about your education and your?
University of Delaware. I've been practicing uh land use civil engineering for approximately five years.
Many, okay, it's accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Of the stormwater management for the project.
Will you continue? Uh, we wanna.
The project will have net increase of approximately one half an acre. Accordingly, the project will be required to adhere to local and state. In order to address stormwater infiltration basin depicted in orange on the graphic within the footprint of the proposed parking area and a surface basin depicted in dark green of the right of way of the proposed realignment, the future realignment of Lower Harrison. And areas of existing and previous coverage that are proposed to be removed and restored with long floodplain. In order to address stormwater, the proposed basins provide peak rate reductions for the two-ten and one-hundred-year design storms. Raritan Canal Commission, where the D R C C is zone A, and therefore is required to provide ninety-five percent total sus- total suspended solid or T S S removal. Through the implementation of the design storm, we are providing a hundred percent T S S, offset the deficit created by the improvements of the volume infiltrated back into the ground. Then discharges through a conveyance pipe to the surfration basin. So the orange graphic discharges to the dark green su- surface infiltrated and currently under construction on Lake, um, excuse me, direct flow away from the culvert under Nursery Road and back internal to Lake Campus, reducing flow getting to Lower. Additionally, the project was designed to meet current stormwater regulations. But and I, lastly, I'd like to note that the project has submitted and received flood hazard area individual permit and flood hazard area verification from the, from the state, and that included stormwater management review and approval. So that is my summary of the stormwater management facilities. Um, if no questions, I will go into slide nine, which discusses uh the design waivers we're requesting.
Regarding stormwater.
Question is, and um current regulations.
It does. So the design, the design conforms to current regulations, which are set forth by um analyzing the site, full depths assigned to Mercer County. We then find higher rainfall depths and we can.
This does.
Yes, yes. Yes, so the project proposes to um New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. The subsurface infiltration basin, which acknowledged as green infrastructure by N G flow to it is pretreated with flow, and then the sir recognized as green infrastructure by with the B M P. Any other questions?
It's good. Any question?
Now, on slide nine, um, is the list that we are requesting as part of the project design. In reference are in reference to the West Windsor Township. Um, so I'm just gonna go down the list and and our reason for requesting a waiver. So for paved access, we're not proposing any changes to the other site, uh, the site act um as it exists today. Section one hundred twenty-nine D one requires sidewalks between parking areas and buildings. We have a paved crosswalk with an associated walk from the ADA space of the uh proposed building. But no others twenty-nine F one uh is a requirement on the use of the site. Um, we're proposing gravel. Uh, as previously mentioned before, twenty-nine G outlines requirements for the site, and to be mindful that we are not proposing lighting and section environment for crosswalks for pedestrians. We provide a created crosswalk from the two ADA spaces on site. But don't, we do not propose any other crosswalks associated from the parking area to the proposed building. Section two hundred twenty-nine I three is a, is outlines the requirements for the widths of driveways through road to our proposed improvements. Once you get on to our proposed improvements, we then conform with the ordinance of twenty-four feet. And section two hundred twenty, um, striping for parking stalls, parking areas gravel, we're not proposing to stripe the gravel. Section two hundred thirty-one K, lighting, as we're not providing lighting in the parking calculations for the lighting. And then section two hundred is in reference to landscaping. Uh, specific stormwater areas is where we're requesting this design waiver, um, as the basin is a surface infiltration basin. And it conforms with the N J D E P B M P manual. We're not proposing any specific plantings within the basin footprint itself.
With with regards to the, I really have no objection to to them. However, as I believe, I think it's important that maybe up that right one, prevent stone from being kicked out into the road. And since operations are gonna be slightly expanded, I think it's important to do that. The thing is that you show it on your plan when you show it to the county.
Okay, we can coordinate that with the county and and provide uh what's required.
What about safety lighting for the parking lot? Even if it's, you know, low-level safety, if someone.
Building-mounted lights.
And and again, if no one's gonna be in there.
Since I'm gonna turn it back over to Mark to to talk about the building.
Sure, thank you.
This too, I believe, slide.
Yep.
This is ten, which is.
Thousand seven hundred thirty-three square feet. Painted a dark gray uh and proposed landscape. The height of the ten inches, this is about the height of a two-story house. The garage doors and the person by code that we have to have uh on this building. Uh, the top image is the south elevation. This is the elevation that faces away from Lower Harrison towards uh Princeton's Lake Campus. Image is the west elevation.
Refab building or you're going to construct it?
Cultural system is a, is a pole barn, is prefab, and then the panel. Yes, that's correct, right, attached to the building.
Thank you.
Uh, so these are the other two elevations. The top is the north elevation, faces towards Lower Harrison Street, towards Route One. Next slide. So this is slide thirteen, uh, showing renderings of the building. Uh, the image on the, on the left. The image on the right shows the um, uh, north and west elevations. Uh, the north elevation, as we, as we saw on the other slide, uh, is designed for minimum activity. The image on the left shows the south elevation, which faces towards Lake Campus and away from the east elevation facing towards presentation. Uh, be happy to answer any more questions or.
Some plantings, that, do they stay low or do they multiply over time to take over the grass or? That might be fan delusion, that question.
Yeah, the, that that would be maintained and there'd be grass here.
But those, those are like grasses, like a plant. There's some grass. Is that what these are?
This is, this, just, just to be clear for the board, these are just a rendering and not the specific example of the shrubs. So the shrub, how the shrubs would relate to the building, I'd um in the plans, but uh planting shrubs around the building. And then you'll have um grass and stabilized turf around it moving out.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other, any other witnesses for?
Questions and depending on the questions we make.
Uh, David, you wanna go?
David, those who have been sworn, if everybody else is gonna testify, okay. Do you swear or affirm a testimony?
Yeah.
Uh, private planner with Birds is Associates, dated February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, the applicant essentially addresses all of the items in that memorandum. Just as a little bit of background, as the applicant had testified till twenty, that consisted of as well as nine hundred eighty-five thousand squared feet on residential uses. So track what is being built, which is called the G D D tracking table. Uh, based on my review, what they're proposing is consistent with what was the comments relating to this application. Per hour of operation staffing, a lot moving out of the footprint in our, uh, information regarding the floor areas. Information regarding the setbacks was provided with what previously. Regarding the uh required number of parking spaces, the applicant indicated the township doesn't have a standard for this type of use. So essentially, the board is the entity therefore that's responsible for determining how many parking spaces you think is appropriate for this type of use. And what you do is you. That's responsible for determining how many parking spaces you think is appropriate for this type of use. And what you do is you base that off of. How many residents, visitors or patrons or you think, um, the site, how they're getting to the site. And the need for saving community loading space. So the testimony that you run both staffing as well as particular storage. Um, I did not have any objection to what the applicant brought forth of that. Regarding the design waiver, uh, those are identified in the applicant's presentation as well as on page six of our memo. Uh, by and large, does not have waivers, those waivers or design standards rather are really publicly accessible areas. Think of public shopping center parking lot where you're, uh, expecting to have more public acts. I would tend to agree with Alan. I think gravel internal to the site is definitely appropriate. If you can get it paved towards that intersection, that really helps with gravel not kicking out into the road. So I would agree with Alan on that one. Simon, I think had a question regarding the. Otherwise, I had no other questions and comments based on this application, uh, unless anybody has any questions for me.
So it's, it's. How many parking spaces? I thought it was thirty. I thought somewhere here you might've said thirty-five.
Thirty-five on the plan.
EB parking space.
Anybody? And any questions for David? So, uh, David, any, anything that they're proposing or asking for, you have no issues with?
No issues.
Okay. Okay. Next.
Yes, I'm right here.
You already have the microphone.
Going through Francis Newsing's second year memorandum of February seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, basically the applicant's presentation of some housekeeping items. Uh, such as under, uh, number one checklist waiver. Um, two under preliminary site plan approval and three under final site plan approval. Um, under preliminary check list, I see requires that they submit a survey several times over the last few years. And we've had several topics, as Francis said, that he didn't have enough, uh, and that's, uh, section two hundred, that clear the number of streets. Um, and the other one street to the nearest intersection with other streets. Again, they're not doing any work, um, close to the intersection and this information has been provided several other times. We got no objection to granting that way. Um, under final site plan approval, the three waivers being requested all relate to the fact that they're going for preliminary final site plan approval together. Um, E one A, C one B one and C one B five. Um, again, there's no, no objection to.
Thanks.
And the only other, I think I should point out are just. Specific conditions of approvals that Francis would like to see put in the resolution. Uh, under number one point zero four, um, now it's submitted a letter of interpretation with CS one zero one four S. So if they need to put, uh, change to a correct letter of interpretation, invite it and. Um, as we discussed before, number, uh, comment number two point zero seven. Um, relates to discussion in the county at here about Dave Agrum at the intersection. So, uh, we agree that that should be made a condition of approval.
What about two point oh five? What about two point oh five?
Uh, um, there is a memorandum issued by people within our practice.
Yeah.
Doesn't list anything related to the, um, the fire.
Okay.
Fire lanes. However, I mean, it is a, the notice requirements is either a design waiver or.
Oh.
They should provide, but at least along the rear of the building, because it's two sides. And the part of the fire. But we, we'll work that out with Chief Lynch.
Okay.
Shouldn't have that. Not important, like. Make that a condition.
I, I think it's worth putting in. I, I, um, Lynn is asking whether we should, should we put in a condition about the fire lines and I think that's worth putting in.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and that would be subject to the recommendation of Chief Lynch.
Was that in accordance with our ordinance?
It is.
Do we have an?
Of the ordinance, so. If they don't, they would even be far as line waivers.
So if it's an ordinance, it should be in there as, you know. Unless Chief Lynch says, hey, I don't think you need it. And then you'd need a design waiver or variance.
I would be.
Design waiver.
Design waiver, okay. But if it's in the ordinance, I don't even know if you go to Chief Lynch, you just put it in there.
Right, usually get his input on where he would like.
Oh, where he would like it. Okay, that makes sense.
And since everything's probably not going to be able to paint, you'll do it with striping. It's going to have to be you who signs it.
Yeah, okay.
Um, under store water, uh, comment three point oh two. Um, yeah, I've been submitted a, a maintenance plan for the, uh, VFPs. Um, we got some minor comments regarding them. That we will submit to the project engineer directly. So, um. Just add a condition to the resolution that, uh, the applicant must comply with the comments that were given. Three oh three, the new ESP needs to be incorporated into whatever maintenance units were established for the, um. The lake campus, north and south VFPs. Where they do it as a standalone, if they'd like, that's up to them.
So the entirety of three point oh three should be in, it seems to me.
Yes.
Yeah. And three, three point oh one, I don't see any need for any condition on that. Okay, thank you.
Uh, four point oh one, this project will result in additional, um, sanitary sewer advantage. Which, you know, taken on its own doesn't further the need for a TWA, but in fact, if there is an existing TWA, it may require an amendment to it. So there's a decision that the applicant reaches out to DEP. To figure out whether they need to amend it or if they don't amend it. And then the remaining ones are just the, uh, the typical ones. Um, it's limited in a generic cost, contract cost estimate, but they're going to be required. The post-inspection fees and that to be made a condition of approval. Um, under six point oh two, they need to provide. Be a part copy and an electronic format, the site plans. Um, for one report and the maintenance manual. That's all you made for this. And then, um, just the outside agency approvals, Mercer County Board. Result of operations district and these are now. They do have their necessary DEP permits at hand already.
Okay. And Ian, given the, um, the report from Chief Lynch, um, I don't think we need to say anything with respect to four point oh two. Would you agree?
No, but he, he may not have been aware of the fact that there's a lock gate there. A lot of times it could be a padlock with a certain code for. For the fire departments.
Yes.
I think Jerry.
I was, but I'm really referring, referring to the hydrant, hydrants.
Chief Lynch, anything about a hydrant other than saying that the water supply for fire protection?
Those are separate.
Yeah.
So where, if you don't have a, a fire hydrant. What do you use? Water on trucks or what? Or how does that work?
Yeah, you have a tanker.
But, but it's saying water supply for fire protection is adequate for the site. Does that mean there's, he doesn't specifically mention a hydrant or there's a sprinkler system? Is there a sprinkler system in there? No.
Yeah, it's, it's too small dwelling food, uh, it's too small.
So, so, so what, what, um. The details behind what exactly.
I mean, there, there's also, uh, the Delaware Raritan Canal they can draft from the. There, there's just the water rate there. So it doesn't make sense if it's wrapped out of the canal like. Well, if they're saying either they're, they can, they can. Maybe the application near can speak to how, how close the nearest side of this.
Yeah.
Want to talk about where it is?
Need a long hose.
Yeah, our engineer may have a comment on the location of hydrants.
There is an existing kind of. On or Harrison, particularly in this project, which we finished, uh, area in the design. And also the on.
Memo is not clear, right?
So you think his water supply for is adequate is referring to the hydrant on Lower Harrison? Is that possible? We don't know.
We don't know. How about we, how about we just at some point get clarity or something?
Yeah. Okay, but it's long, it's far distance. How many feet is it to Lower Harrison? Are the hoses that long? I don't think so.
Mike, maybe you can just have a condition that, uh, Chief Lynch will determine whether an additional fire hydrant is going to be needed for this project.
Sure. Okay, let's make that a condition that we verify with Chief Lynch what he means by adding water supply and if the hydrant is necessary. Okay. Uh, anything on lighting? Anything about lighting?
Um, the applicant provided the testimony of.
We're good. Okay, um.
Does insurance companies require any lighting when there's parking?
I'm sorry.
Does insurance companies require any lighting? It's your property, but.
I, I know he speaks to Chief Lynch about this and he said that, you know, it's not an issue for the emergency personnel. They bring their own lights, so.
If they have any issues, the insurance company will tell them, put lights in. Okay, um. Any, any issues with the engineer's report?
No.
No, okay, thank you. Okay, who's up next?
Tom Walsh, Engineering, um. In place for Chris Johnson, the engineer of the Moore's.
Please speak into the microphone.
Right, um, Chris only had, uh, one comment. It was basically. In speaking to, uh, the presence of bald eagles near the sites, NJDP has listed bald eagles as, uh, in that area. On unrelated project, but nearby this location, you've seen many settings of bald eagles. You might have some restrictions from DEP based on construction due to their increased presence. Just be mindful of that. So, but everything, everyone else read the comments.
Okay. So any, any, any issues with protecting the bald eagles that might, might or may, may be around? No?
What?
It's you.
We'll follow whatever NJDEP requires us to follow.
Okay, protect the eagles.
Yes.
Cobers.
The report says no EV charging stations are proposed, no bicycle racks are proposed, but that's, that's not, um, correct, right?
That is correct. Yes, we are proposing bicycle racks.
Right, and the EV charging station.
Yeah, that is correct. A conduit.
Conduit.
E, E, uh, EV ready. And then if, when it needs to be up and running for a vehicle, we'll have it. We're meeting the requirement, which is to re, to have it an EV ready. Um, space.
More and more people are, you know, buying electric vehicles, so.
Mm-hmm. And, and the university keeps, yeah, the university is there to serve, you know, their, their employees, their, their students. And they look at that and evaluate it. And over time, you're going to see more and more, if that's the way things will continue, you'll see more and more, um, electric vehicle charging.
Okay, thank you. Okay, tra, uh, traffic.
Hello, I'm John Carey. I'm in for Kaizen Masood from our office. We have a memo dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. The applicant has. Red car, engineer comments, and we're satisfied with their work.
John, how do you spell your last name?
C A R U Y.
Thank you.
My, my only comment, just as a general comment is. Is that I don't know what, what the traffic engineering comments were about or concerns. Cause there's no paragraph description of anything. That's a good comment for the board and the different reports.
Mike, let me just answer that. We had two TRC meetings with the applicant over the last couple of months. There were a lot of concerns from all the professional staff. The purpose of the TRC is to get all those technical issues resolved, so the board doesn't have to deal with them. I specifically tell the staff that their planning reports are not to reference what the problem was at TRC. Provided it's resolved when the application comes in front of the planning board. So suddenly you'll probably notice that the staff reports are one or two pages long now is because I will not let it leave TRC until all those technical issues are resolved.
Okay, thank, thank you, Sam. You, you have a say with that? Not really.
Not really. I mean, I, I would like to get some, some, some more information about, you know, some issues raised and it's.
Yeah, but it's.
I, I don't, I don't, you know, maybe not ten pages long, but I just feel like it's a little bit light.
Well, if the issue, if there were issues and the issues were resolved and there's no longer any issues. And traffic is going to flow, the trucks are going to park, the fence is going to get locked and everybody's going to be happy. Right? Okay. Okay, Dan, you're up. Thank you.
Good evening. My report's from February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. There were three comments. The first one is the. Touch of Greenbelt, the Greenbelt is not impacted by this proposal. Uh, the existing tree removal, as you've had the testimony, will be mitigated by the planting of new trees. Uh, the tree removal, by the way, is on the opposite side from Harrison Street. Uh, so it doesn't really, most people won't even know what's going on with the tree removal. The landscape design has been upgraded, modified, as you can see here tonight, to address previous concerns for buffering, et cetera. And it, it clearly addresses the code requirements. I have no additional comments or concerns or conditions to offer with that. The stormwater management basin waiver, they went over that. Um, it's consistent with the other basin design that they've done in this campus. And I have no objection in the waiver request, no, no conditions. So I don't have any conditions to offer, or I think the plan is adequately addressed all previous concerns.
Uh, I have a question regarding the plantings around the building that was depicted in. Those are just a rendering, but the. It is in the location of this building, does. Do you need a say in what gets planted there or you?
They, they, actually they were at it because we asked them to address that area.
Okay.
This is their landscape, so the people that work here do landscapes throughout the campus. They will know exactly what works best for them. What I envisioned there is going to be some load shrubs just to make the building look more attractive. And not to detract from, you know, not to be obstruction or anything like that. If it is an obstruction, this is the group that has to fix it.
Okay.
So they know what they're doing, um, and I trust that they'll be able to do it.
Okay, that, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at, um, that no need for oversight by you because this is what they do.
Correct.
Got it, okay. Uh, any questions for Dan or anybody? I think that's it for professionals, um. Okay. I'll turn it over to the public. If, does anybody from the public wish to comment? On this application, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi.
Should you raise your right hand? You swear or affirm a testimony about to give you the truth?
I do.
So, so please state your full name.
It's Erica Worm Tony, that's W O R M. T O N E Y, forty-three, Lower Harrison Street. Um, I'm going to be my own good cop, bad cop today and thank you for. Planting the same number of trees you're taking away. Cause when we were first shown this proposal, they were taking away a hundred trees and planting four, so this is lovely. And also thank you for the buffer along Harrison Street. It really makes us feel like you are hearing what we're saying. Um, as the open space across the street from us gets built upon. Um, my one real concern as always is water. When you live in the hundred-year flood zone, water is always a problem. I know, um, you encountered a lot of groundwater while putting the water main in for the rest of the lake campus. And I want to express my concern with that. And make sure that the engineers on this project are talking with the engineers on the other project. So everybody knows what happens underground in our, in our area. I came home from two days at my parents' to three inches of water in my basement. It wasn't even raining. We have three sound pumps. That's what we deal with on a regular basis every day. Um, so I just want to make sure the engineers are talking to each other. Cause I know you use different companies for different parts of the project, and I just want to make sure they're talking to each other. Um, but really? Um, oh, um, if the Harrison Street realignment ever happens, um, do we have an idea where access to the nursery will be to Harrison Street? Old Har, Lower Harrison Street or Harrison, New Harrison Street?
I think our projector's off, but if, if you look back at the page, we designed it where the driveway entrance into the site would be extended to the road. So if the road was ever built, it would be accessed right there.
Right into.
It's on, it's on. Oh.
New Harrison Street, okay. Um, and then the other question, um, is what happens to the stormwater if they build that? Cause right now, the runoff from the building would then be going under the road to get into the other basin.
It, it would be able to continue. You could have our engineer talk about that, but it's at a depth that it would be able to, to be maintained.
So it'd go under the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
And Chris, well, point out the connection to the, uh, new Harrison Street on the previous.
So here is the, oh, yeah, here's the access. Well, actually, I think the other one's a little, you know, you could see here, it's like a dotted line. This is where the access would be into the site and then out of the site to the road here.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any, any other members of the public wish to speak on this application? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. I don't see anybody else stepping up. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. Move by Simon, second by Alan, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing is closed, um, let's debate, debate the application. Any, any, uh, anybody have any comments?
I guess all the waivers, well, we can tell whether, Jane, the waivers.
But, yeah.
That, right, that's a, that's a question before the board. I mean, there were basically two questions. The waivers, the design waivers primarily, also the submission waivers. And then assuming that it's the board's pleasure to go ahead and approve the project, the condition should be, uh, uh, incorporated into approval.
Our professionals didn't have any issues. I didn't hear any, any significant issues with any of the waivers, design waivers.
The only thing that is, that what I had brought up, I think they should put that on the plan.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. That was the paving of the road.
Apron, yes.
Okay, so that'll go on the plan and then that'll be discussed.
We would talk to the county and our position would be to make, um, some sort of pavement or process. Yeah, depending on what the county determines, appropriate.
Um, I didn't hear anything else of significance that needs to be addressed. Yeah.
And just in terms of the, uh, conditions, um, we went over them with Ian Hill. And we could go back over them, I don't think we have to, that was fresh in everybody's memory, I'm sure, because it was only a few minutes ago. And then three additional conditions which came up today, uh, at the meeting are, um, what we just talked about in terms of the seventy-five foot, um, apron. And then Chief Lynch should determine whether a hydrant is necessary. And the university should discuss with the fire and police department access to the site and provide the fire and police with whatever they want in terms of access.
Jerry, what, what did you say about seventy-five? I couldn't, I, I didn't understand that.
First seventy-five feet back from Harris, uh, Harrison should be paved.
It, it's not, we're not making a claim to the measurement. What we're saying is that we're going to go to the county that has jurisdiction and we're going to propose a, um, uh, an apron that is not gravel, that will satisfy the county, um, some sort of asphalt thing. Or what, what kind of material are we? Most likely asphalt. And we're going to propose it that way. It, it'll be up to them to determine the size, the, the curbing, you know, all of that stuff, because it's county jurisdiction. But we are, we're agreeing to present it to them the way you have asked us to, which is to put an apron there that is of asphalt or similar material, rather than gravel.
So it's the length of distance that is, that we, you don't want to be held accountable to, because you don't know, they may say eighty.
Yeah, it's their jurisdiction and we're gonna, we're gonna propose it like you've asked us to.
Right.
But it, they will determine how they want to design it.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
So they have a jurisdiction.
For that.
To do that, we don't have, we don't have a jurisdiction like that.
That's, that's correct, county right away, yep.
Right, and.
Right away, okay.
Right, we can't say it has to be seventy-five feet. We don't have jurisdiction and we don't know if it should be seventy-five, fifty, forty, or a hundred. So that kind of makes sense to me. Um, any, anything else, Jerry?
Oh, that's it.
Okay. Any board members have any, um, other questions or points to the applicant? Um, hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with the, uh, condition as noted by Gary.
I'll second. Okay, um, motion by Alan, second by Simon. With, you know, design, well, the waiver, design, what are his conditions enumerated?
The mission waiver.
It's, yeah, the mission. Um, so I have a motion by Alan, second by Simon, uh, Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Mr. Shaquell?
Yeah.
Mr. Panko?
Yes.
Mr. Bag?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Yes.
Chairman Clark?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time tonight.
Thank, thank you, good luck.
Just so the board knows, we will not have a meeting next week. Our next meeting will be March first, and you have the application packet with you.
Okay, thank you, um. There's no other, nothing, nothing else on there? I'll, uh, meeting, meeting at eight thirty-seven.